Everyone, why don't we go ahead and get started? Supervisor Ryan is on his way, so we'll go ahead and get started to respect everybody's time. So, call to order. As a reminder, if you're carrying a cellphone, computer, two-way radio, or other sound device, we ask that you silence it at this time to minimize disruption of today's meeting. If we could please go around and have the supervisors introduce themselves. District one.
Good morning and happy Thanksgiving to all. And if anybody is traveling, please travel safe. We hope to see you after Thanksgiving holidays, so I'm present.
Thank you. District two, Eronimo Vasquez, District two and current chair. Thank you for being here this morning. We look forward to having a good meeting. Thank you. District three, still not here yet, so we'll move on to district four.
Good morning, everyone. Judy Begay, District four Supervisor, current Vice Chair. Happy Thanksgiving Day tomorrow. Thank you. I mean Thursday.
Thank you. District five. Thank you. Now, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We will now have called to the public to allow for any comments from the public. Please note that issues presented during the call to the public that are not on the agenda cannot be acted on by the Board of Supervisors. For items not on the agenda, individual supervisors may ask questions of the public, but are prohibited by the open meeting law from discussing or considering the item. Individuals are limited to three minutes for their comments. If you have a comment regarding a public hearing item, please wait until we get to that item and open the public hearing to provide your comment. We will take public comments from those in the room first, then public comments from those that have joined virtually. Clerk Daly will explain how the public can provide comment.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. At this time, if there's anybody that's joined us in person that would like to provide a comment, you can fill out the comment form if you would prefer that I read the comment for you, or you can make your way up to the podium now. If you've joined. You can hit the raise hand icon that will appear on the icon that looks like a hand. If you click on that, that will ring and notify us that you would like to speak. We do not have any hands raised and nobody making their way to the podium, Chair Vasquez.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Daly. One last time, is there any public comment?
There are no hands raised, Chair Vasquez.
Okay, thank you. In that case, we'll move on to the next item, the Consent Agenda. All matters under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by a single motion. Are there any items that board members want to consider separately? Any items? No? Oh, wait. Supervisor Fowler? Okay, so we'll have number eight. Number 10.
Eight and 10.
Eight, 10, and 12.
Yes. Eight, 10, and 12. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for helping.
Getting ahead of myself.
Mr. Chair, with that, at this point, I would make a motion for us to accept the Consent Agenda. Items one through one through 11, removing items eight, 10, and 12.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Second by Vice Chair Begay. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, can we go to number eight, please? Consideration and possible action to approve the Juvenile Court contract with Georgetown University Center for Juvenile Justice Reform to provide the first year of a three-year program to provide guidance and training in the area of addressing racial inequality in the juvenile justice system in the amount of $60,000 for one year, renewable for two years for an aggregate value of $180,000. Juvenile Court.
Hi, I'm Brad Crossland from Juvenile Court, Senior Administrative Manager. Hopefully, I can answer any questions you have.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to learn more about this research project. I thought it was really interesting that we're conducting this study. I just wanted to learn more and how it's going to benefit us across Coconino County. What is it that we're looking for?
Yes, so Juvenile Court, just looking at the data from Juvenile Court over the last few years, it's very clear that there's a disproportionality with Native American youth who penetrate deeper into the system than white juveniles do. And so, some of our staff, our Director Casey Lightfoot, Deputy Director, our Judge Angela Kircher, and others were all able to go to Georgetown University earlier this year to take their Advancing Racial Justice and Equity in Youth Legal Systems Certificate Program. And additional staff went from the Superintendent of Schools, yeah, County Superintendent of Schools and other departments. And so, we brought that back to Coconino County, and we're offering it to all Juvenile Court staff plus friends. So, I believe there are several people in the room, including, I believe, the county manager, Ms. Mosher, Mr. Ringenberg, who are all attending. And we've already had one session already. And we'll continue every month for this first year, learning about how to address racial injustice in the justice system.
Thank you. I just thought that was really interesting. And I remember when you all were going to go to Georgetown, and we ended up having some kind of meeting. Oh, that was budget conflict. Yeah, that was the reason. So, I'm really happy that this is moving forward, and I'm really happy that this, you know, just being able to go out and learn and then bring it back and really implement it. I think that's so important, especially when you're really looking at a very diverse population and how to improve your services. So, I just want to thank you for, and the team at Juvenile Court for having implementing this in our system here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the Juvenile Court contract with Georgetown University Center for Juvenile Justice Reform to provide the first year of a three-year program to provide guidance and training in the area of addressing racial inequality in the juvenile justice system in the amount of $60,000 for year one, renewable for two more years with an aggregate value of $180,000.
I move that we approve item eight.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge that Supervisor Ryan is with us and did vote with us.
Who is that guy at the end?
New identity.
The mystery man.
All right. Number 10. Consideration and possible action to approve an independent contract extension, RFP 2021-104 through December 31st, 2025, between R Entertainment LLC and Coconino County for Management Services of the Pepsi Amphitheater, where the county is to receive a minimum of $100,000 per year, and the independent contractor has the opportunity to renew the agreement for an additional five years following this term.
Thank you. Hi Cynthia. So, I just want to appreciate the updates from R Entertainment continuing. I read the updates that are sent, and I just really appreciate that. It seems like this year, we've been on this course for a number of years trying to, you know, make sure that we provide the entertainment and also for all of Coconino County's citizens at Port Tutt Hill, but at the same time, really trying to generate revenue and also provide the services that's needed in our county. So, I just want to appreciate that and just the, I guess, the performance that have been happening. It sounds like sadly enough, I have not gone yet. I planned to, but I just haven't had the time. And I just hear really good things about it. And I just want to see what your thoughts are on where we are with R Entertainment as well. And just, I mean, it looks like we're just going to raise new, which is really good news.
Chair Vasquez, members of the board, thank you for those comments. And I will concur with you Supervisor Fowler, that R Entertainment has done an extraordinary job. We have certainly seen the momentum of the number of acts, the variety of acts, especially this past year, over the last two years. And this year has just been really extraordinary. We're getting updates. I think they're not ready for us to announce, but there are already some very, very exciting programming on the horizon for this coming year. So, you have another opportunity to make it up to the amphitheater this coming season. And we're hearing from the public on occasion that they are also recognizing and providing a lot of recognition to R Entertainment for the quality and number and variety of entertainment that they're bringing and programming that they're bringing to the amphitheater.
Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, I'm glad you pulled this, Lena, because similar thoughts. My gosh, it's been a journey from the very beginning. You know, we had great aspirations, have been through a couple organizations. We even went out to bid last time because I think we were trying to achieve what they have achieved this year. I did send an email off to Curry Done, just noting that they're there. They're doing a great job. They're bringing in entertainment that we hope would be available through the venue that we have out there. So, you know, I add to the compliments of Supervisor Fowler and congratulate them as well as you and your staff, Cynthia. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, they've certainly turned the corner.
Supervisor Horstmann.
And I also want to thank Carrie Dunn and R Entertainment. They've done an excellent job, as both my colleagues have outlined. And they've done a great job, not only in programming, but working with the county as partners, keeping us informed. You know, the last letter we got in, I believe, October, you know, they're keeping track of the economic impact that their programming is bringing here to Coconino County. And I really appreciate that, really appreciate their efforts. And I look forward in the future of partnering with them for talking about infrastructure improvements. And I know I was out there, got a couple tours and a couple suggestions from them. And, you know, I know this has been near and dear to Supervisor Ryan's heart because it's been in his district, but I think many of us who love that amphitheater and have been, I've been lucky enough to make it out there a few times this last year. And I want to know about that programming coming up. That sounds very exciting. So, you know, thank you. Job well done. I know it's been times of struggle, and I know Cynthia, you've been a very good advocate on behalf of the county, so thank you for this as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Begay.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Cindy and for all your staff, you know, for making things happen, you know, within your department. And I also concur with all the comments that the board has made here. You know, I think, you know, we're seeing things happening, and there's, you know, there's stuff that we can look at, like possible infrastructure capabilities and stuff like that. So, thank you so much for all your efforts.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Yeah, thank you again. I just really appreciate Carrie's emails and just keeping us abreast. It's been a really amazing journey that we've been on, just from the very thought of doing this and then going through a number of contracts and even having community input. And this, I think we're now at the place where of comfort, it seems like. like. So, I just really appreciate that. And I want to just thank R Entertainment and the team there. And thank you. So, thank you so much. And I know there's a lot of partners involved as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I move to approve item 10.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve item 10. And we have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
for more of a public education portion. So, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, County Manager. All right, moving on to number 12. Consideration and possible action to approve the Second Amendment
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Fowler, and Kathleen Levinson is with us from
to the intergovernor governmental agreement for the joint use law enforcement facility
the Sheriff's Office. And if I could ask Kathleen to make some comments related to the joint venture, which began in 1998 and continues through today with regard to the
leaf between the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, and the Coconino County Jail District
co-location, the joint uses, et cetera, and then also answer any questions on the insurance
to allocate responsibility for real property and personal property insurance at the law enforcement administration facility located at 911 East Sawmill Road, Flagstaff, Arizona.
that's allocated. And you see in the staff report, the allocation by percentage of use Mr. Chairman, Kathleen Levinson from the Sheriff's Department is joining us remotely of the building. So, Kathleen, if you can provide some introductory comments on the partnership throughout the years. and can respond to questions on that item.
Sure. Thank you, County Manager Peru. Chair Vasquez and members of the board, this
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler, did you have any questions?
has been a great feat for both the city and the county over the last 23 years, to share a building, to share services such as custodial, information technology, warrants, records, dispatch. It's it's been a great fiscal savings for both entities and the taxpayers of our community. Historically, there was a verbal agreement in place. You know, 23 years ago, there weren't all of these contracts and attorneys and everything getting involved at the time, which understandably is needed now. And so, there was a verbal agreement that the city would pay for all of the insurance for the building. And about two years ago, I think it was, we all looked at it and said, well, you know, we need to have something that's that's in writing and documented. And so, what we've agreed upon, also involving the two insurance pools, the county and city insurance pools, and both sets of attorneys and risk managers and all of us gathered, and all of the stakeholders agreed that we should base the both, well, the real property insurance for the building is based on the county-city ownership and occupancy of the building. And so, the city owns and occupies almost 70% of the building. And then, the county, being Sheriff and Jail District, has about 30%, a little over 30%. And so, they will pay for the insurance and we will reimburse them for 30% of it. And then, each entity, the city and the county, will pay for the the contents of their property. And so, that's what that's what we're doing going forward. And I think it's a really good solution. And the stakeholders are really working well together.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this item?
Great. Thank you, Kathleen, for coming. And just I just think it's important, another important partnership that we have that we that has really bloomed into a really good, I think, a good understanding. And that partnership has to have a certain amount of trust and understanding. I think this is a great example of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
County Manager.
Thank you. And can I have a motion for item 12?
Oh, yes. And I move that we approve item 12. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler and a second by Supervisor Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, let's see. May I have a motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors? Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Gaye and a second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, there are two items on the flood control consent agenda. Do any members want to separate the items? All right, in that case, may I have a motion to approve flood control consent items 13 and 14? Supervisor Horseman.
I would move to accept the flood control district consent agenda with just great thanks to the speed in which the flood mitigation projects are taking place.
Thank you. And I have a second by Vice Chair Gaye. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, we need to resolve as the Board of Supervisors. May I have a motion? We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler and a second by Vice Chair Gaye. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, let's see. May I have a motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors? Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Gaye and a second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Let's see. So, now, we need to resolve as the Flood Control Board of Directors. May I have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control Board of Directors. Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Can I get a second? Second by Vice Chair Gaye. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, there are two items on the flood control consent agenda. Do any members want to separate the items? All right, in that case, may I have a motion to approve flood control consent items 13 and 14? Supervisor Horseman.
I would move to accept the flood control district consent agenda with just great thanks to the speed in which the flood mitigation projects are taking place.
Thank you. And I have a second by Vice Chair Gaye. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, we need to resolve as the Board of Supervisors. May I have a motion? We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler and a second by Vice Chair Gaye. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, let's see. May I have a motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors? Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Gaye and a second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. We're now the health.
I was I was gonna see what would happen if I did not approve it, but I'll go with the flow.
Thank you. There's one item on the Public Health District Consent Agenda. Do any members want to separate the item? No? Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to approve the Health District Consent Agenda, item 15?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ryan and a second by Supervisor Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, we must resolve as the jail district. Let's see, wait, wait, we have to resolve as the Health District first, and then we are back to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you. And then to the. Okay, may I have a may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisor?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Horseman, a second by Vice Chair Gaye. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, now, can we resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors? May I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Supervisor Ryan and a second by Supervisor Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, there are two items on the Jail District Consent Agenda. Do I have, do any members want to separate the items?
I would move that we accept and approve the Jail District Consent Items 16 and 17.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, do I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisor?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ryan, second by Supervisor Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I, you know, I'm just glad I'm here, because Supervisor Horseman's acting up. I don't know. We gotta get her to move here.
So contrary.
All right. Well, now, item 18, public hearing, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2023-59, approval to supersede and update former record record fees charged due to receipt recent legislation pursuant to ARS 39-129 with an effective date of October 30th, 2023. I hand that over to, please note, oh, please note that this public hearing will not occur, as it will be in a future meeting. Thank you. Are there any comments or?
My only comment is nothing to do with the agenda. And that is, it is freezing in here, and I rarely am cold. But it's really cold in here. So, it just, if they're, I know you're crazy. That's all I can say. But and I know she's got, Supervisor Gaye has a blanket on already. So, if there's any way we can just turn it up just a notch or two, it'd be great.
Thank you Supervisor Horseman. I'm sure staff's getting on it. All right, now, item 19, discussion and consideration and possible action to canvass election results for the November 7th, 2023 consolidated election. And It got was withdrawn and will be put on another agenda. Sorry if that wasn't clear with all the stuff with the heater.
Chair, just to note, we kept it on the agenda because it was published in the newspapers. So, therefore, if anyone that saw it in the newspaper and expected it to be addressed, it's at least on the agenda to note that it's been withdrawn.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, so number 19, discussion, consideration and possible action to canvass the election results for the November 7th, 2023 elections. Elections Director Esla Musta will present, as with recorder Patty Hansen.
It's always exciting when we get to canvas elections, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, all untold. Go first. it's not that time of the meeting to be able to address it. So, we are moving forward with the presentation about the canvas of the election. Thank you. All yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for having me here to do part of the canvas of the jurisdictional elections that just took place on November 7th. I'm also joined today with the county recorder Patty Hansen, as well as the Superintendent of School Cheryl Mango Paget, that will be doing part of the presentation this morning as well, to present the official canvas to the Board of Supervisors. One of the items that we put together a couple of short slides to just for the for the record to identify the jurisdictions that participated in the November election a few weeks ago. They were several, seven jurisdictions, a total of 51,000 registered voters were eligible to vote in these elections. The elections were anything from local special districts to the City of Flagstaff that had several charter amendments, as well as a citizen proposed referendum. Some of the major calendar and milestones in preparation and leading to the today's to today's date in in canvassing the election results are listed and outlined here. Like, with any election, everything starts well in advance of the election day and start of the early voting. There were 41 precincts that participated in elections, 44 different ballot styles. We conducted pre-election logic and accuracy testing with our political parties successfully prior to the early voting started. And and we started the tabulation of the of the ballots that we were receiving on October 30th. There were several election day replacement sites that the Recorder's Office managed and made available to the public. And then, on election night, we did report the initial election results at 8:00 as required by state law. We continued the tabulation for a couple more days after the election and concluded that on the on the last day of the curing and posted the final and official results that that you have in front of you. We conducted last Friday, like I said, the post-election logic and accuracy test of our equipment with the presence of the of both political parties, and that was successful. So, I'd like to turn it over now to the Superintendent of Schools Cheryl Mango Paget to go over some of the school district initiatives that were on the questions that were on the ballot.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, County Manager Peru, Chair Vasquez, and members of the board. I just wanted to give you a brief little report that our Grand Canyon Unified School District override was successful, and it was for maintenance and operations. And then, we coordinated and worked with the Alpide Education Service Agency, and the Ashfork Budgeted Maintenance Construction Project was approved for Bus Barn and as well as Sedona Oak Creek. It was approved in both counties for 15% maintenance and operation override. And I just want to thank our reporter Patty Hansen and our Director of Elections, Essler, for making this a very smooth election cycle, as well as our Chief Deputy, Bon Martin.
And then, I'll briefly touch on on a couple of the voter turnout data and the ballot measure initiatives. As a county overall, we, the voter turnout was close to 41%. What was interesting in looking at some other counties that had elections, just November, was that we more than, like, in some cases, we more than doubled the voter participation this this election from other counties in the state. And that is credit to the engagement and the and the citizens in the county, like, participating. We broke down the voter turnout for each of the jurisdictions. And like, one thing of note is that it wasn't just the City of Flagstaff that had a high turnout, High Blute Santeria District, and as well as well as the Sedona Unified School District had, you know, above that average voter turnout. What you what you have in your packets today is a certificate of the official canvas with the official tally and the results. And we have incorporated into that the ballot report that the Recorder has prepared as well. There is a cumulative official report, as well as a statement of all the votes cast. And this information will be shared with all the jurisdictions and will transmit those election results to them after after any questions from from the board and after the approval.
Are there any questions from the board at this time? All right, thank you. We appreciate the report. And now, we have our recorder, Ms. Patty Hansen.
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Fowler.
Essler, thank you to you and all the coworkers, all the places that allow us to conduct elections. Really appreciate it. Thank you to our school super
Thank you to our school superintendent, who is always on task with all the schools. So really appreciate that. Were there any issues that came up, you know, with all the elections discussions and all the polling places and early ballot and just, just the whole process? Was there any issues at all?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Fowler, thanks for that question. I apologize for not mentioning this, but this was not a polling place location. Everything was done by mail, and the Recorder's Office had the Herculean task of getting that situated. But they did have like the polling replacement sites where they had poll workers and that. But I think overall, like this election went very smooth, and there were not any, any issues that were identified through the process. And again, I credit it to the voters in our community that like participate and are actively engaged in this process, as well as all the players in the process.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought, that there were no polling places. But there's such a, to conduct election, there's so many people that are involved. And then our, this shows that our voters are used to mail-in ballots now also. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now our recorder, Ms. Patty Hansen, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Vasquez, Vice Chair Baguette, and members of the board, members of the public, and also county personnel. I just have to start by saying, I am so happy to see my favorite supervisor here, Matt Ryan. That's a longstanding joke between Matt and me. But I, I won't get as many chances to bring it up. Yes. As Director Musta said, this was a ballot-by-mail election. So in your packet, you have a ballot report that we mailed out 51,000, 51,000 ballots to registered voters in the different jurisdictions having an election. It's unusual to have it come to such a nice number, 51,000. But that is how many there are, or were in this election. As Director Musta said, he went over the turnout with you. We had to reject 213 of the ballots that came back to us. That's just a little over 1% of the ballots we received. The reasons are there, missing signatures, signed by someone else. Those are usually cases where somebody in the household has voted for the voter spouses. Think they can vote for each other, and sometimes parents think they can vote for their children. But we have to reject those. We actually had six empty envelopes returned. And then 147 were received after the election, on the first few days after. We're still receiving late ballots, but just to give you an idea, some people mail their ballots on election day, and we try to get them to return it earlier. But unfortunately, we are not always successful. We have ballots undeliverable or returned to us with a different mailing address. State law does not allow us to forward early, our ballots by mail. And it's kind of frustrating. We did mail postcards to all 51,000 registered voters prior to the election to tell them this is a ballot-by-mail election, and we cleaned up our list. But we have a very mobile population here in our county, and especially in Flagstaff. Thought you may be interested in knowing how the ballots are returned to us. I have to mention the picture. We did offer our drive-up, drop-off service again in the parking lot of our building. It's gotten to be very popular, and we had started it in the middle of the 2000s. It was when Candy Owens was our county recorder. And this is the first time we had somebody on a hoverboard come in and drop off their ballots. So we thought that was kind of fun. In fact, I think Stan was there working when that was dropped off. Yeah, I, I do want to thank the election office. We asked the election office if they want, would assist us with staffing the drive-off, drop-off service. And so we have two people of opposite political parties that work out there and receive the ballots, and they were very helpful. I think their entire staff took a two-hour shift. And I also want to thank our recording division and the mailroom, because they also assist. And of course, our voter services staff. To go over this, as Director Musta said, we did have replacement ballot sites. There was one in every jurisdiction. We shared, and these were sites on election day that we staffed from 6:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m. And we did share the sites in Ashfork and Sedona with Yavapai County, because they had part of those districts. We also offered voting to people incarcerated in the jail. These are people that are waiting to be, their trials are in there for misdemeanors. There's still eligible registered voters to vote. We also did two home visits. These are people that were homebound and needed assistance. We send two members of a special voting board out to assist them. And the UACAVA is the Uniforms and Civilian Absentee Voting Act. That's our military and overseas voters. And you can see the majority of ours are voted online. And we have a secure system through the Secretary of State's office, where we are able to send them their ballot on, through the, online, somewhere up there in the cloud, I guess. And then they get to vote it, and they send it back to us. And then I want to point out, the majority of the voters returned their ballot in the ballot drop boxes. So our voters really like ballot drop boxes. And I also want to mention, there's a lawsuit going on right now in Yavapai County Superior Court to try to take away drop boxes as an option for voters to return their ballots. So we're keeping an eye on that. And for our voters, I'm hoping that the judge does not real to take away drop boxes. And also included for you, in your packet, how many were dropped off at each of the drop boxes. I want to thank the Facilities Department. They make all of the arrangements to set our drop boxes up and secure them for us. And then they also take them down after the election. And they are a very important partner to us in regards to voting. And I also want to mention that in 2024, we're going to be adding two more Dropbox locations, one in Country Club, and then one over on University Avenue. These were areas where our early voting board, or our voting board that processes ballots, have identified that they think people would like to use them.
Supervisor Ryan.
Where on University?
University Avenue at the new election center.
Okay. Makes sense, so up in Baldur Point, so to speak.
Yes.
What district is that in?
I think it's in my favorite supervisor's district. Patrice is not going to talk to me after this. You know, he's leaving the board, so we know that there'll be a reshuffling there, Patty. Well, I'm leaving it, leaving, you know, in a year or two. So you're stuck with me for another year, I'm sorry. Okay, Supervisor Fowler, you brought up, was there any problems? These are problems we have with every election. As I mentioned on why we had to reject ballots, was missing signatures, our mismatched signatures. I just want to mention, we spend a lot of time trying to contact people to tell, to correct the mistakes. And we do have people that, if it's early enough, we could mail them a replacement ballot. But if it's later, we ask them to come into our office, or at the mall office, or a replacement site on election day. And we do this, we ask people to provide a phone number. It's not required, but it's really helpful if people do, because we need to reach them to tell them that there's a problem. And according to our state law now, unsigned ballots, envelopes can only be processed if they come in and correct it by 7:00 p.m. on election day. Now mismatched signatures, which is the ones where we don't think it's their signature, or maybe their signature is changed and we need to verify it. They have three business days after this election, so they could come in the Monday after the election because of Veterans Day holiday. Our, for the state primary and general elections, they have five business days. And we use, we'll be using in 2024 the text-to-cure option that the Secretary of State Hobbs, at the time, provided. And we found with young voters, that's really good, because they go everywhere with their phone, and so we can reach them by text. I do want to mention another thing that's new for 2024. And, oh, I also forgot, I want to mention on the signatures, there's another lawsuit in Yavapai County that wants to restrict the recorders to only be able to use signatures on voter registration forms. And what we use now is any document they send to us with their signature. So if we talk to them and we say, it looks like your signature has changed since you registered to vote when you were 18 years old, and you're now in your 40s. Is this your current signature? We'll scan that envelope with that updated signature, so we don't have to keep bothering them, or the 90-day notices. And this is done by all 15 recorders across the state. But there is a lawsuit, again, filed in Yavapai County to say that we could only use that one on the voter registration form. So that's another lawsuit that we're keeping an eye on. Okay, new for 2024 in regards to people who vote by mail is where the legislature passed a law that, right, that we need to tell people that with their early ballot or ballot by mail, when it comes to our office, we have to have a way for them to check and know it has come to our office, it's been received. Right now, it will, what I have on the slide is what's there on my.arizona.vote. And you can see on this, it says ballot returned and a date. What it is really right now is we've processed your early ballot or your ballot by mail. It's, it may be sitting in a rack for, you know, three or four days earlier until we could get to it. You wouldn't know, but this new law is, provided money for us to be able to have about what it's received, when it's processed, when it's accepted. Oh, it also tells when we send it. And if there's a problem, it will have a notification in there. Either pending, contact the Recorder's Office. So I think this is something we're really looking forward to and should improve things. Our voters do like voting by mail, a lot of them. So that's it. This is probably how you feel after, well, this is how we feel after an election. So.
So, so what did you say to get that look?
That, I call it her Robert De Niro look. It's like, are you talking to me?
There you go.
So, yeah, this is Ellie, my sweet girl.
Nice.
Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Well, thank you very much for the presentation, appreciate it.
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. Just, just don't tell the others, but you are my favorite elected.
I won't. I don't.
Thanks Patty.
Is anybody else in here? We'll keep it a secret between us, okay? You know, and if I can make.
Yes, Supervisor Horseman.
And not about that, but just in general. You know, it's, it's wonderful here in Coconial County that we are able and prioritize to have open, fair, and transparent elections. And I just love it when we get to canvas election results, because it is the culmination of all of the hard work that has been done by our County Recorder's Office, our Election Director, who are there to ensure that our votes count here in Coconial County, and to my colleagues who also are part of the democratic process to ensure that we do our job as a Board of Supervisor in canvassing and accepting the election results. So I just want to point out that's something that is, you would think is just standard operating procedure, and it is here in Coconial County. And so I want to thank the Recorder's Office, our elections, and quite frankly, everyone in the county who takes part here to make sure that our process is smooth, transparent, efficient, effective, and most important, accurate. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Horseman. Any other comments? Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah, on the, on the serious side of things, and you know, I appreciate Supervisor Horseman bringing that up. It is time to pause for all the hard work that Patty, your office puts in, Essler, your office puts in. We work hard at Coconial County to assure that people have their right to vote protected, that they have that option to do that. It's been challenging at a national level, as well as the state level, that, you know, I perceive and I sought on that right, that right to vote. And so we work hard to assure that it is protected, that people have the right to have that opportunity, provided that they are registered appropriately. And so, you know, I acknowledge the points you're making Patty earlier. We're constantly challenged at the legislature on people trying to change and reduce those rights. And it's a battle that we need to continue to fight to assure that they don't have, they don't affect that. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Any other comments from Board members? Supervisor Fowler?
Yeah, thank you. You know, with all the changes that are, that are being proposed, and also the, I think, just the discussion about election, there is a lot of confusion out there on what is, what's been taken off and what, what are the changes? So, you know, I think that, and I know you all are doing this, but educating the public, maybe we need to do a lot more of that. And if there's anything that we can do as the Board of Supervisors, you know, we can, please let us know. And then from our side, you know, we listen to our communities to see where they are. But just this election alone, just the mail-out, it's just, I'm just really impressed with the, with the return and also just the process that has taken place. I think that in our, in our county, we tried, we work really hard to work with our local communities to be able to ensure that individuals are able to vote. And we just have, and I really appreciate you all safeguarding that, that process, and being able to provide that to our communities, so thank you. and that process and being able to provide that to our communities. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. All right, if there are no other comments, I'll make my comments. And just thank you for our elections teams for safeguarding our, our right to democracy of having a voice for the citizens of Coconial County. Appreciate all your hard work and we, we know that in the upcoming years and election year. So it's important that these, these midterm or non-presidential year elections go smooth as a test run to get things ready for the big elections as they come. So thank you for all your hard work and look forward to collaborating with you moving forward to ensure that we have safe and secure elections moving forward. Thank you. All right, our next item.
Yep, we need to.
Would you like to make a motion? Canvas the election.
No, we're just going to leave you hanging. Can I please have a motion to accept the election results?
If I may, after those glowing words from the board, we almost forgot to do our duty, right? It is my great honor and responsibility to make a motion to canvass the election results for the November 7th, 2023 consolidated election.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Horstman and a second by Vice Chair Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. All right, our next item is now a discussion item regarding state and federal legislative and administrative matters. County manager?
Yes, thank you. Keith Burkus is going to be presenting today. Gregory Nelson is on vacation this week. So Keith?
It depends how long you talk Keith and whether it's going to be morning or afternoon.
Oh, sorry. They will give a state and federal update, but I can give a short overview. At the state level, several of the board met with some of our state lawmakers last week. So we were down in Phoenix. Supervisor Horstman and Vice Chair Begay met with several members of the minority party. Supervisor Fowler met with the House Appropriations Chair on the majority party. Supervisor Horstman also met with the Governor's Water Policy Advisor. So those are very good meetings. We were able to give our, some of our asks with, with the members of the legislature. Let them know some of our priorities, which is DFFM funding, which is Division of Fire and Forestry Management funding. Having that recapitalized and we also discussed with them some of our transportation priority projects. US 89 getting the drainage improvements there is one of the projects. And also some of the projects with Metro Plan, like having a bus barn that doesn't have to spin the buses around in the middle of the winter to work on them, that's large enough to hold their fleet. On the federal side, I think the biggest news is we've just been sort of tracking what the, what Congress is doing, particularly the House of Representatives. And thankfully, Congress and the President were able to keep the government open. On November 17th, they were facing a shutdown, but there were some continuing resolutions or passed two separate sort of items in a two-tiered bill that will keep all the departments funded through, one set through January 19th and the other set into February. So that's good news as far as keeping the government open. And then we do have our state lobbyist Karen Cruz has joined us now. So I will let her give the state thing and then I'll just stand back but can answer questions at the end if needed. Go ahead Karen.
Thank you so much Keith and, and good morning, everybody. I, I first want to extend a very personal thank you to all of the Board of Supervisors who are engaging in our effort to meet with all of the legislators, at least the key legislators. And we have, I've worked you very hard and I very much appreciate your, your willingness to, to engage. Just, I don't want to add too much to what Keith said because I don't have that much to add other than to highlight the fact that we've had some very high-level meetings so far. In addition to almost all of the appropriations committees on both the House and the Senate side, we've had great meetings with both.
Your volume is not coming through Karen. You're not muted, but it's not coming through.
A little bit better?
Oh, there we go.
Okay, good. I apologize. Again, I was just extending a heartfelt thank you to all of the supervisors who are carving out the time to go down and meet with the legislators and just highlighting the fact, not to add too much to what Keith has already described, but just to highlight the fact that we have had some very high-level meetings already, including the appropriations chairs of both the House and the Senate and staff, which is a really important, critical piece because they provide input about how they are going to approach some of these asks as they go through the appropriations process. So it was very helpful for us to gain some insight from them about how they're viewing these funding requests in the environment of a now what we understand to be a potential one and a half billion dollar deficit in the budget. That will change, that will shift. They've described how they are going to potentially be approaching, filling those gaps. One of the tools that I believe they're going to be utilizing is going back in the infrastructure, the one-time infrastructure dollars that they had allocated in the budget, approved in the budget over the last two years. If there's no federal funding attached to them and if they are not close, if not ready to go, those will be vulnerable to being swept and clawed back to the general fund to be reallocated to fill gaps where there's a deficit. So I feel good about where we are at because we're doing all of the right things based on what we're hearing from the appropriations chairs. And we'll just keep plugging away. And in the meantime, we've got a lot more meetings to be set after the holidays. And again, I really appreciate everyone's time in, in meeting those legislators. It's, it's really, really incredibly helpful.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I just got to put you on blast Keith. I went down as well and I had six meetings.
Yeah, I mentioned that. Yeah. Chair Vasquez is also down there and had several meetings.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You got the heavier lift, I'll tell you that.
Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, and Karen, thank you. It's great to see you. And thank you for your assistance and obviously Keith and Gregory as well in setting these meetings up. I think they are important. I appreciate my colleagues' willingness to go down there and to fight the good fight. And sometimes that's what we're doing is just fighting the good fight. Of course, it's, we have very serious concerns here in Coconial County and quite frankly, other rural counties. We have the wildfire emergency fund as part of the DFFM reauthorization. We would like to see funding that's so important to us, not to mention 89A and the ability to get the final millions, couple millions together to get 89A up for passage. And, and other very, very big concerns for us here in Coconial County. What my concern is and remains is that there was last year a projected surplus of $10 million. And due to changes that the legislature made on the flat tax and school vouchers, we are now facing a situation that was originally projected at 400 million. And now they're talking about a million or to a million, I'm sorry, to 1 billion, to one and a half billion dollars of a deficit. And that's very disheartening. One of the concerns and the messages that we gave that I think it's important for the public to know is I, I, I am not as optimistic as you are Karen about whether we're going to see a response, a positive response to our very needed asks. But one of the things that we underscored is that we cannot have the state legislature balancing or attempting to balance their incredible deficit on the backs of us counties. We, the counties, do everything we can to be able to provide the services to our communities as well as be financially sound. And their continually of state mandates without the funding to go with them is really creating a budget problem for us here in our counties, especially us rural counties. We don't have the budget that many of our large counties, AmeriCopa County and Pima have. You know, we have a very limited budget here. So that was underscored, I know, by my colleague Judy Begay, Vice Chair Begay. And I'm sure our chair, who had the heavy lift with the majority party, made that clear to them as well. So thank you Karen for all of your work. And to members of the public, we will continue to advocate on behalf of what's important for our communities here in rural Arizona. And we hope that it does not fall in deaf ears. So thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Horstman. Any other comment? I just say, and I'll talk more about it during my roundtable report, but it was a good experience for me. It was my first time since being a supervisor of actually going down to the Capitol. So is as Chair, I felt like it was necessary for me to step up in that role and create those relationships. I know last year, as we're looking through getting funding for Highway 1, or 89, 89A.
I always do that.
That's in District 3. We're talking about District 2 and 4 over here. So, so, but you know, the three asks that we really, the heavy lifting asks were for 89, the Lone Tree Overpass and, and the DFFM funding. With 89, the piece that I learned from last year's budget to this year's budget is it was in the conversations to get funded last year and at the last minute, did not get funded. And I realized on my end, part of that was I didn't keep more engaged in that process as it went through. And so for this year, it's my intention to really stay on top of that, create those relationships with the legislatures in transportation to see if we can get that included in there because we're so close to getting the funding we need for 89 and it's so crucial. Also with the Lone Tree Overpass, it was, it was encouraging. I think we have, we have, we have an opportunity there as well. So I really hope that, that we just keep pushing and, you know, things will work out as we build those relationships. So thank you.
And I'll just simply add, I apologize. I'll, I'll just simply add that to the extent that I mentioned that they're going to go back over the last two years and sweep funds that are not locked up. We're also very carefully watching that they don't sweep HERF funds. At the moment, there's a commitment by both the Governor's Office and the majority leadership in the legislature to not touch HERF. But we will watch that very closely as well because I know that's a very important fund for everybody.
Karen, just for clarification, can you explain what HERF is for, for the citizens?
Yes, it's the, it's the gas tax that has not been increased since 1990. But the fund itself from that gas tax goes into a specific fund, the HERF fund, which is the highway users, I want to say revolving fund.
Revenue fund.
Revenue fund and it's dedicated to providing funding for roads, surface transportation projects, maintaining the roads.
Great, thank you. And as we know in rural Arizona, that funding is so crucial. And if, as was mentioned earlier, if we don't get these, the state funding for these roads, a lot of times our communities are coming to our counties asking and we don't have that kind of funding either. So thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Hey, now we have our federal Bob Holmes and Anamar online, I think. So if we can tee them up, they'll give a federal update.
Thank you Keith and thank you, members of the board. It's great to be here. I'm really excited that, that we're also, the county's also partnering with Karen. We've had the opportunity to work with Karen Cruz and the Cruz group on a number of things. And she does a tremendous job and I know she's going to do a great job for the county. And we're just excited that, that we can, we can partner with her and she's going to have a lot of good ideas on the federal level. And we're going to have some good ideas on the state level and can collaborate together. In terms of a federal update, I think Pete Keith's been doing a great job updating you. But just for your edification, the government will be funded from now through January 19th. That's when 20% of the funds run out. And then there's a second continuing resolution for about 80% of the government that runs out on February 2nd. So there'll be kind of two stopgap measures. The House's plan is to pass all the appropriations bills or at least get them through committee or through the House and then negotiate with the Senate. There are drastic cuts there in the House bill versus the Senate bill. The Senate bills, I expect at the end of the day, that the, the bills will look much more similar to the Senate bills as opposed to the House bills. But that remains to be seen and I think the House is trying to use their position against the President and the Senate to, to leverage. So that's kind of the, the update with regards to federal appropriations. We have a new speaker too, as you all know. We were kind of scrambling to learn a little bit more about him. He's only been around for a few terms since 2018. He's elected in 2018 and so we're still learning a lot about him. He has been a member of the Freedom Caucus, which is part of the more conservative members of the, of the caucus. So we're, we're learning more about him as we speak. In terms of appropriations and some of the projects we've been advocating for, including the sheriff's radios, we, we are, are still in a holding pattern with regards to that. But we have talked to appropriators and they said that if it is in one house or the other, we should be in fairly good shape. That means we just got to keep on pressing the flesh and talking to our folks back here. But I feel like we're in pretty good shape with regards to appropriations. With that, I'll stop and see if Anna wants to add anything or if the board has any questions or comments.
I mean, I think Bob said it all.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman.
Well, we, you know, the, the craziness just keeps on going, I guess. So now we're talking about the feds. I love it. So we really again appreciate both of you there, back there on our behalf and advocating on, on important issues on the federal level and keeping us informed on what's going on back there in Washington. So you're welcome to come back here anytime. We miss you both and thank you for your advocacy.
I promise we'll be back soon, maybe within the next two months.
Any other questions or comments?
No, we should say happy Thanksgiving because we won't see you all. So happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, have a great holidays. Okay, I just want to say I appreciate all your hard work and thank you for the update. It did look a little scarier a couple of weeks ago than it does right now. It's not completely done or over or fixed, but at least there's progress. And so that's encouraging and hopefully when we come out to Naco in February, we'll have a funded budget and not be in the same mess again. So. Yeah. Again, thank you for all your work and for keeping us informed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I just want to make one little quick comment is while we're still waiting for appropriations, I think you were just kind of alluding to it, Chair Vasquez, is we should, we're going to start thinking about appropriation requests for next year. And if you have all, any ideas, we're, we're collaborating with Gregory and Keith and they're doing a great job and we'll continue to inform you about the process. But we should start thinking about appropriations for next year as well.
Thank you for that. We appreciate it and we'll keep that in mind and hopefully have some stuff to you soon. Thank you.
It's probably fitting that the final continuing resolution ends on Groundhog Day. Not everybody will get the reference, but when we get there, it'll be like, I think we've seen this movie before as they decide whether to shut down the government or not. And I'll leave on that note.
Thank you Keith. Next item is a discussion. Next item is a discussion review of possible direction regarding Board of Supervisors' planning calendar. County Manager Peru.
Thanks Mr. Chair, members of the board. We can show the planning calendar, we have it in your packet as well. I'm just going to go over a few items. We have a pretty busy season to wrap up the calendar year. A lot of events are the holiday events associated with, with all the activities here. So, but today, this afternoon, we're having the discussion on the vacancy process for District Three. And then from there, you'll see other things in terms of the November twenty-ninth, that is Wednesday, and that'll be the board meeting where the board will be interviewing candidates. And as I understand, we want, the goal is to wrap up the process on the twenty-ninth. And so that, that will, we'll discuss that more this afternoon. Second, more social events on the second and the fourth. And then on the fifth of December, the items that you'll see listed here, wanted just to highlight a few items, we are going to have the, an update on the short-term rental ordinance. And then also Lucinda Andriani is going to be presenting information on the commit, on the Wildland Mitigation and Management Commission that she served on the National Committee. And that is happening on the fifth. On the seventh, we have pre-lighting in Tucson, also William Senior, we have Flag Light Parade on the ninth, we have Howl Holidays on the tenth. On the eleventh, we have a board retreat and I have a handout to go over suggested topics for your, for your review and comment that I'll hand out in a moment. And then we also have on the twelfth, the Elected Official Leadership Appointed Leadership Board as well, will be having a holiday gathering. That's happening on the twelfth. Also Flag Senior Center, and then on the twelfth through the fifteenth, the ECO Conference is taking place down in Mesa. On the twelfth, back at, on the board meeting, we will be starting at four PM. Budget process, scheduled discussion, we're also, you know, we'll go, we'll be going over the, the budget process for next year. We're also working with the process to retool a few items in there that, that need some tune-up. And so you will be coming to the board for discussion there on the twelfth. The fourteenth, the CSA Holiday Meeting. From there, the fifteenth, NAU commencement for members of the board that will be participating on that. The sixteenth is the Western Agency Council Meeting, and that is an annual event that is held at CCC, and that's the Western Agency of the Navajo Nation holds their winter meeting here in Flagstaff. The nineteenth is a special day, it is Matt Ryan's last board meeting.
What should we say, who? Who?
From there, a couple of items on the agenda, two items in particular I want to highlight on the nineteenth, we'll be beginning our discussions, public discussions with the board on two items for consideration for the ballot for two thousand twenty-four expenditure limit and then also the other topics forced restoration as two topics for consideration of the ballot. Also the dark sky ordinance will be heard that evening as well. And then jumping over the January ninth, the first business meeting of the, of the new year, January ninth, is where we will be, the board will be appointing the new District Three supervisor. So that is happening on January ninth. Again, I think those are the highlights as we know them today.
Thank you. Would like to get a chance to just look over the board agenda suggestions and then we'll get back to you on, on our feedback retreat.
And I'm providing-
Board Retreat A.
What I, what you're receiving right now are suggested topics based on my conversation with individual board members on topics for the agenda. Obviously, there's eleven items and we have four hours. And so not everything will be able to get addressed on that time, but I'll just briefly go over them, accomplishments countywide and by district, opportunity to share that, priorities from last retreat, and we do have issues and topics in the last retreat to provide a follow-up and status on. Communications check-in to see, you know, in terms of communication flow between the board, board from me, me to the board, board to the department. So just to check in, to see how things are going, to address any issues relative to project tracking, any gaps that, that we need to address with regard to communication. We'll also be discussing the District Three vacancy process. At that time, on the eleventh, we will have appointed a designee or the board will have identified as a designee. The appointment will take place in January. So again, we'll be talking more about any transition logistics that need to occur. Items five and six are together, County Manager Performance Evaluation and Succession Planning for the future. And so having, again, the process for evaluating my performance as it relates to future succession planning. My employment contract will term on April of two thousand twenty-five, and so the discussion relative to performance as well as some of the items that the board wishes to take care of in the future creates that context by which, in which adding my performance evaluation will be important. Two items that we're teeing up as new program initiatives, one is the tribal affairs program development. This, this program was allocated one-time funds last budget year for contract. I know some board, there's an interest on the part of the board to discuss this regarding retooling or revising that allocation from a contract to a position. And then the other item is restarting the recruitment process for diversity, equity, inclusion program. This has been funded for several years now and recruitment has not yet yielded candidates and so we want to restart the recruitment process there. Item nine, again, discussion if, if needed on the two thousand twenty-four ballot questions and as indicated, we'll be talking about that in a board meeting on the nineteenth. And then the two items, County Strategic Planning Process, again, looking at the need for the county to adopt and work on a strategic plan. There it's a process and a timeframe that goes with that. And then finally, looking at our organizational improvement initiatives from, from the past to the future. We've had, you know, in the past, high performing organizations, the county embarked on, on organizational renewal process in the past. And so looking at the future, how do all these roll up? We've been having discussions at, at the leadership level about an initiative that focuses on organizational and employee resilience. And so looking at our organizational improvement efforts from current and then, and then into the future. So those are just a list of topics that I yielded from individual conversations with board and I'll be happy to please provide any feedback as we get closer to December, to the December eleventh, so we can refine background material on those topics or new topics as you indicate.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Just me looking at, I see a couple of topics that can be bound together under one topic and so we'll get you that feedback, but do appreciate the list and the ability to start visualizing what that retreat will look like on the eleventh. Does anybody else have any comments Supervisor Horseman?
Yeah, just real quickly, thank you County Manager, and I probably have some even to add unfortunately, but I do know it's from eight to one. And part of this and part of the whole idea for the retreat, besides, you know, being a working retreat for various items, is really for the board to have an opportunity to discuss ongoing matters for the board and relationships and, and, you know, moving forward, our, and just kind of our, our ideals, goals, dreams, whatever. And obviously, this is a pretty intense, and if it was a week-long retreat. And so I think we really need to take a look at coming up with the top three or four to allow the opportunity for that kind of communication between the board. I mean, that's what a retreat's supposed to be about. And given the short timeline, it may be something we want to take a look to continue it sometime in January or, you know, early next year and, you know, kind of add to it as we go forward. Just a thought.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Looking at it, it is pretty jam-packed and we want depth, not breadth. So I definitely agree that we should be looking at what are our top priorities at this meeting and then schedule out some follow-up work sessions or retreats to address some of these other issues. Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, you know, whenever a retreat happens, the best part is it's a, it's a chance to check in. Everybody's so busy, you get lost from each other and, and it's really good to bring that together. Not only that, but I, I think what you have here is a good outline. You know, maybe other topics will come up that, that go to what you're suggesting that, hey, maybe we can do a follow-up or this is an area we hadn't considered. One comment I have is using the board chambers usually is not a good idea. People have a tendency to get into their own business with their district and, and that's why, you know, we have usually selected off-site locations for that. Try as you may, somebody's on not only their phone, but their, yeah, so just, just a thought on that.
Are you suggesting a place with no Wi-Fi out in the middle of the woods?
Oh, that, that is actually a good idea. It's, it's, it's a, it, it keeps the board members from getting distracted and you really could focus, you know, that's a good opportunity there. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. And we definitely look at some alternative locations for the retreat and look forward to having it in less than two weeks. Thank you.
That is all I had to report on today.
Supervisor, or Vice Chair Gay?
Yes, thank you Steve for the list that you gave us. So it is a long list, but you know, I think, you know, we can come up with so many up, up front that we really need to address. And I think one of the things that we really kind of need to look into or have on there and discuss is this furniture element, forest restoration and dark sky ordinance. I think that's one of the ones that we're, needs to be one of the top ones. So that's what I was just, my thoughts, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is this also the conclusion of twenty-two, County Discussion Update from County Manager regarding possible community regional administrative matters?
That is it.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is roundtable. Let's mix it up today and let's start on this side of the, the, the days. District Three Supervisor Ryan, if you could, please go first.
Thank you Mr. Chair, probably best, best stat because I'm going to keep it quite simple. You know, I've been going through recovery from hip surgery. I've appreciated everybody and their support while I've worked through that. In the meantime, you know, I know you as board members as well as management and Jen have been focused, keeping us on track. And I just appreciate every, everything that everybody's doing. As far as the district, I think everybody's kind of settling down and wandering off. Seems like, I think I was seeing it on the news, it, it seems like Thanksgiving has become a two-week process at this point. So people are launching out this past weekend and they're coming back. And I'm, I'm talking from a, a community perspective or speaking from a community perspective on that. I just hope everybody has a wonderful holiday and I look forward to coming back after the holiday. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Why don't we go with District One? Okay, we'll go with District Four.
Just, thank you Chair. Just a, a highlight of a couple that I really want to mention is that we had the Veterans Symposium. It's the fifth annual statewide tribal veterans symposium that, that was held at Twin Arrows on Friday and Saturday. And it was well, very well attended and they had a lot of breakout sessions. Some of the breakout sessions were the Native Cultural Sister Training, Indigenous Health Equity, then Employment Training, Home-Based Veteran Family Care, Health and Wellness and Family Benefits, Arizona State Veteran Home, Homes Issues and just a lot of other Warrior Training, Advancement Course, those are some of the breakout sessions that they had. So it was very well attended and they did a good job in putting this whole event together. And this is the third year that I'm very involved and already looking forward to the next one. But I would request that, you know, some of my colleagues attend this because it's something that, you know, really is, is something that, you know, it's a healing thing that, you know, for some, for our veterans and they come to you and they talk to you. But there was also people that were there from the BA Tribal Advisory Committees, they did their presentations, they talked to the people there, National Indian Health Board also, they were there also. And we did have a, a board dance the last day on Saturday from one to five o'clock and we were involved. And so we got a chance to do a, as a board supervisor, opening remarks on the second day. And so it was, I think, you know, this is something that's really, really good. They had general sessions too, so the Doug's Fair people, a lot of the presenters did their presentations there too. So I just want to say that, you know, with the Coconino County, I want to say thank you to Steve. And then also we did also assist in soliciting twenty-eight blankets that, that were sewn by a nonprofit organization group and all those donations went out. And we, we were going to try and change it to something else again. So we, the last three years, you know, the county has, you know, really come forward to, to be a part of this. And so they're thinking as, you know, as county board supervisors that, you know, they're, we're thinking about the veterans. And then also I think that the national anthem was a really highlight too also. Candice TeKlay, she's a Apache girl and she sang the national anthem in Apache. And then Kylie Jim, she did play the flute, you know, with the national anthem. So they're both Navajos, I mean, Kylie's a Navajo from Bonato area. So that was really, really something, you know, to see that. And so that, that was two-day events as of the last board meeting. And of course, we went to the CSA meeting and they just gave us a little bit of update on a public safety recruitment and release study that was being done by the three colleges, ASU, NAU and U of A to partnership on the study and to see what the challenges are within the public safety workforce. And so also I think Patrice is going to talk about the Governor of Water Policy Council meeting and where they're at with their, their rural groundwater management, you know, proposals that is going to be finalized here and presented for approval. So then we also received an update on priorities approving the annual policy summit back in, back in October. So their, so their next meeting is on December fourteenth, CSA meeting down in Phoenix. So that's, that's the other one that I had attended. Then also we had Mountain Line Meeting, Council, Alliance Council Meeting where everyone just kind of gave their presentations as to, as to what, what is, what they're going, they're doing, you know, within their, within their areas of work. And so it was, it was, the county staff were all there, they did their presentations too. So I just want to say thank you to the county staff and, you know, for being there and being part of the, being part of the update and, and so, so that's, 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 you know, anyway, they had that meeting there. And then of course, we had the, the House and Senate visits. We went in, went in partners and we went to several, several of them. And again, you know, we were promoting DFM and DFFM and also their rack build backgrounds, information how, what the challenges we've had since we had closures of eighty-nine and, and where the people that utilized those roads, you know, during that time and the closures, you know, it really affected the, especially the tribal nations who have traveled to the urban center for medical and also school, as soon as being bused to school and then also for, for their jobs. So again, you know, others have already brought forth, you know, information regarding what our visit was about. And Karen Cruz did a real good job in getting us out down there and then she was right there beside us and she kind of reinforced everything because she was very knowledgeable in, you know, how the processes work. So I'm very- So I'm grateful to Karen for, for that. And, and I know that the board members all feel the same way about, you know, the funds that we need and, and how our fundies, we're using our own funds and that reimbursement is not taking too long and, you know, things like that. So we, we, we don't have the money, you know, to do certain things. But you know, certainly as a, as a board, you know, we're moving forward and solicit as much as we can and, and talk about, you know, what our needs are and what our challenges are. So that's the bulk of my report for since the last board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Begay. Next up District one Supervisor Horseman.
I'm glad I didn't have to go first. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. So, and, and I appreciate the very thorough review of my colleagues. So I'll try to keep some of my comments short on those areas. You know, one of the things we were able to do, which was just excellent for the board members who attended, was the summit that we did on economic development, economic outlook. Just the coming challenges here to the state of Arizona and, and also just challenges that we're going to have here in Coconino County. Also been working with our community development on Glamping. And you heard me talk about this before. You'll probably hear me talk about this again. And looking forward to sitting down with community development and taking a really in-depth look at this. It is something that we're seeing more and more of here in all of our districts, but certainly in, in my district. And looking at ways that we can improve what we're doing here in Coconino County. We took part in the Stuff the Bus and that's always a wonderful event. I appreciate Andy getting the bus. Hopefully next year they'll have the bus for both days and, and the location. But it was really wonderful to work with the Flagstaff Family Food Center and to our community to make sure that other members in, in all across Coconino County have a happy holiday and a holiday meal on their tables. We, as was indicated, did get down to the Phoenix Legislature. Both Senator, or I'm sorry, you're Senator now. Supervisor Begay and I were meeting down there with a number of members of the minority party. Supervisor Begay is kind of giving you an overview on that, so I won't. But I will make a note that I was able to meet with Patrick Adams from the Governor's Water Advisory. And he indicated that the Governor's Office would get the report from the Governor's Water Advisory Council. That would have been last Friday. I did see some news articles on that and on the recommendations on their water advisory proposal. I'm looking forward to carrying back, as we all are, from the Governor's Office and their recommendations and to submit their report to the legislature in hopes that we can get some rural groundwater management legislation and activity going here for Arizona. We also did take part in the CSA, both Medium County Caucus and the CSA. And again, Supervisor Begay did a very good outline of that. I would point out that we elected new members for our leaders within the Medium County Caucus and CSA. And these are such important times and important meetings for us to attend so that we can share with our colleagues from the 15, 14 other, there's 15 of us, other counties from across Arizona, what we're doing, what's working, what, what's not working and what we can do together to really help our communities here and improve local governance. So I really appreciated that. Also yesterday on, what the 20th was, was Trans Remembrance Day. And the City of Flagstaff had a nice presentation for the Trans Remembrance Day and was great to be a part of. And I, looking along, I think we're getting close to the end. I just also want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, safe travels. And I'm enjoying, I'm looking forward to enjoying a little bit of time off and enjoying the holidays. So Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday. It's a great time for family to get together. So I hope everybody has a wonderful time. So, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Horseman. All right. I'll go ahead and do my round table and combine chair report. On November 9th, as mentioned, went down to state legislature with Gregory Nelson and Karen Cruz and had the opportunity to meet with Representative Tim Dunn, Senator Kavanaugh, Representative David Marshall, Representative David Cook, Senator Ken Bennett and Representative Marcelino Iniones. And came and asked our three major asks, which was $5 million for 89, $15 million for Lone Tree Overpass and the $35 million for DFFM. So it was a good start. It wasn't a one-time shot. It's going to continue, we're going to have to continue those relationships and those conversations to, to try to secure this funding that, that we do need. And so I look forward to continuing that conversation and working down with, with our lobbyists, with our government affairs teams and with these representatives trying to get our asks through. So it was a good experience. Like I said earlier, it was my first time since being supervisor of actually going down and lobbying on the state level. Done it many times on the federal level, but this was the first time down on the state Capitol. And I did enjoy it and do, do see the value in it and want to continue to do it more as, as we get closer to the new legislative session. Last week I had the opportunity to participate in the Naleo Health Policy Conference. Naleo stands for the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. And it discusses best practices on how to support and advance policies that contribute to better health outcomes for Latinos, which are the second largest population group in the United States and also make up a third of District two. And so we had some good conversations about developing environment to create healthier spaces and also about potential programming or ways to connect with the community around mental health issues. So I look forward to working with our local Health and Human Services and sharing some of the information, seeing how we can, we can discuss how research on social determinants of health, which include economic stability, educational quality and access, healthcare access and quality, neighborhood and built environment and social and community context can be integrated in what we're already doing. And we'll probably find that we're already doing a lot of these things. That's, that's the cool thing about some of these meetings. Oftentimes we go, we learn about all this cool stuff, then we come home and ask about it and we find out we're already doing those best practices in a lot of cases. So I look forward to those follow-up conversations with, with our, our team here. On the transportation front, we had our NACOG TPEC meeting and we reviewed regional priority projects. And also had a, there was a study about rural school bus routes and just seeing how the need for, for transportation in the rural areas, in particular buses, how that, that's playing out and what needs TPEC will be supporting moving forward. TPEC is the Northern Arizona Council of Governments Transportation Committee. Then in addition, as was mentioned earlier by Vice Chair Begay, Mountain Lion had their executive board. One of the things that we did approve was a 60 cents per hour raise for hourly positions. So that'll go into effect into the new year. And we updated some, some personnel policies. I am vice chair of that committee, of that board. I will remain vice chair for another year. I was up to be chair, but considering I'm also going to be chair of Metro Plan and current chair of the board, Tony Williams, the current chair was gracious enough to agree to do another year so I could stay as vice chair. And then I will, I will assume that role moving forward after the year. So I'm learning as chair. Don't want to stack my plate too much. So let's see, what else? I've been meeting with elected officials. I had a great conversation with, with County Attorney Bill Ring and look forward to those continued conversations. Also with Mayor Becky Daggett, just about where we overlap with city and county priorities and look forward to continuing that conversation as well as with our city-county huddle and just looking at some of the ways that the city and county can collaborate moving forward. We're in the process of nominating seven members for District two nominating committee for the Arizona Commission on Trial Court Appointments. And so we're working on getting those, those appointments in and have them start going through that process so that we, we can have some nominees to present to the state. Um, let's see, we've had a Fernwood Timberline Neighborhood Watch meeting recently and I shared just updates on District two and what's going on with the county in general. I also had a, the opportunity, well, I didn't have the opportunity. I had the opportunity to send my district director to the reentry simulation at the sheriff's office. And I hear it went really well and it was a great experience to learn just how difficult it is for folks that are in the justice system to kind of navigate and get on their feet once they get out. And so I think it was a really important simulation that we need to continue to share with all the different stakeholders in our, in our region that, that deal with folks or potentially could deal with folks that are dealing with reentry to give them an idea of just how difficult it can be to get on your feet. And so I think it was a really important simulation. I hope that I can make the next one. I had a scheduling conflict that day, so I wasn't able to attend. But I'm really pleased that my district director was able to attend and participate. And then I need to put a shout out to the Family Food Center for their Stuff the Bus. I was scheduled to be there and I was sick that weekend, so I did not go. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that I wasn't there, but I meant to be there. And I'm really glad that it was a great event in both days and that there were lots of donations. And when I did get, get on my feet on the last day, I did go by the Safeway on the other side of town to get some things, some medicine actually, and we did contribute to the donation. So while I wasn't there in my official capacity as a citizen, I was, did have the opportunity to donate to the program and really pleased that they, that they continue to service some of our most vulnerable in our community. And so that would be my report. It's been, it's been quite a process. We're working through getting through the appointment process, which has been a big undertaking. And so I really appreciate the staff and, and all the effort that's been put into making that move smoothly. I know that we'll be having those conversations after lunch. And so before we close out, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody. I hope you enjoy your time with your family. You've all earned it. And we have a lot, as was shown in the planning calendar, we have a lot going on. It's going to be really busy before the closeout of the year. But take this time, recharge with your family and get ready for the final sprint before we finish the calendar year. I appreciate you all. And with that, unless we have any comments from board Supervisor Ryan?
If I may, just to note, Mr. Chair, the replacement of me is not a piece that, it's an appointment to be made in the future. You're going through a process, but respecting the process and that's a decision for the future, that is a piece that I will not be involved in. So I will not be there during that part of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan for stating that and letting us know that you won't be part of that process. We appreciate you respecting the process and we appreciate all that you've done to help us get to this point, to be able to get through the process.
And there's no replacing you, Matt. You know that.
You are the one and only.
I, I love you too. Thank you guys.
All right. Well, thank you. Unless there are any other comments from the board or from staff, we are adjourned till 1:15. Thank you.
Joining us this afternoon after lunch. Before we continue, can we just get a call to order and get a roll call? District one.
District one, Patrice Horstman, present.
Thank you. Eroni Mavaskas, district two, present. District three has recused himself for this portion of the meeting. District four.
D B K, district four, present.
District five. Great, great, thank you. All right, now is a discussion and possible direction regarding applicants submitted to fulfill the vacancy of district three county supervisor. That will occur with supervisor Ryan's last day being December 31st, 2023 due to retirement. Pursuant to A R S 38 dash 431 point 03 A 1. The board may vote to enter executive session on this item. I'll pass it over to the county manager's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and today Corey Ringenberg is going to be presenting the slides that are in your packet. And I want to just appreciate Corey and Melissa and everyone else that's been part of the process. It's a process that we don't always go through. It's a process that we just went recently through back in when Supervisor Vasquez joined the board. So it's still somewhat fresh in our mind, but again, Corey is going to walk the board through slides that are in your packet and can be also seen online through the presentation. So with your permission, sir, I'll turn it over to Corey.
Please do, Mr. Corey.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board, county manager. I did want to preface with all of the information that you've received was prepared and submitted to your packet on Wednesday, November 15th. We do have a few minor updates and I'll discuss those as we go through the presentation. So starting off where we left off on October 24th. We began the board discussion and the board gave step half direction on the process thus far. Since our last presentation on October 27th. Since our last presentation on October twenty seventh, the district three vacancy application webpage was opened soliciting applications, letters of interest, and letters of support based off of the direction given to us. I did want to highlight on November thirteenth, that was the designated submission deadline. There was a technical issue with the webpage where it closed early. So based off of the timeline, it was reactivated until November fifteenth to allow for any last minute submissions due to the early close of the webpage. At that time, the public comment portal was activated and is currently active. Today, we checked and as of twelve twenty seven today, we have received zero public comments. So just wanted to give you that brief update. So today's agenda, we are really looking at the board discussing the applications that we've received and providing some determination on the applications that will be interviewed. And the board may select who will be invited to interview on the twenty nine. We also have included in your packet interview questions that were previously used during the vacancy process for district two, and we open that up for discussion as well. Following, we have discussing any formal details of the interview process scheduled for November twenty nine. So with that, we wanted to give you where we are today. All of the electronic submissions from our applicants were received. All of the information was forwarded and thanks to the county recorder's office, they were able to verify the minimum qualifications only. And reiterating the minimum qualifications were the voter registration, party affiliation, primary residency or residential address currently in the supervisory district three boundaries. And I can say at this time, all of the applications that we will be presenting today do meet those qualifications. So one of the updates, we did receive seven submissions through the online portal. However, earlier this week, one application was withdrawn by the candidate. So we'd like to focus on the six applications that we have received and that are still standing. Also wanted to draw attention to the public comment portal. As I mentioned, to date, we have received zero public comments. However, there is a public submission option on the top toolbar of the Coconino County website, and it clicks on district three vacancy public comment. All of the information that you've received in your packets today are located on the agenda center and are available to the public. Based off of your determination of which candidates may be considered for interview on November twenty ninth, we are prepared to place the brief biographical statements and optional photograph submitted by the candidates on the public comment portal. So the next item we have is briefly going over an overview of the candidates that submitted their information. On these brief slides, we are just covering the candidate's residential location, education, profession, any boards, commissions, or recognitions that they have listed, interests, hobbies, and confirming their minimum qualification status. This is just a snapshot of the information received by the candidates, but wanted to give you some foundational overview. At this time, are there any questions regarding the information we've prepared before we go into the candidate submissions?
Colleagues, any questions at this point? Okay, please continue.
Thank you, sir. So first, we'd like to highlight Adam Hess of Belmont, Arizona, who has a master's degree and is a U.S. Army officer retired, receiving multiple accolades through his meritorious service in the military, as well as teaching awards. His hobbies include hockey, being a hockey dad, volleyball dad, snow, skiing, disc golf, custom cars, and he meets the minimum qualifications. The next applicant, Ms. Sue Greaves, resides in Mun's Park, has an associate's degree, has a vocation of customer service, and current hobbies and committee work include participating in the Democratic State Committee, enjoys gardening, hiking, and circulating petitions, and has also met the minimum qualifications. I am skipping over slide nine as that candidate has chosen to withdraw the application. And moving forward to Mr. Eichenberry, Eric Eichenberry of Williams, Arizona, holds a master's degree, has listed his occupation as retired, serves on a governing board for the Coconino County, our Coconino Community College, enjoys mountain biking, motorcycle riding, street and off-road, and archery, also meeting the minimum qualifications. Next, we have Nicholas Hanley of Flagstaff, Arizona, holding a master's degree, current occupation administrative specialist, three, for the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Has multiple real estate and sales, as well as education accolades, has diverse interests in physical activities, policies, history, leadership, networking, and service, also meeting the minimum qualifications. Next, we have Jermaine Barkley of Belmont, Arizona, holding a master's degree and current occupation as a manager, prevent preventative health services at N A U. Past participation in the aid act committee with Coconino County and enjoys health equity, dogs, racial and social justice, also meeting the minimum qualifications. The last candidate we have for review is Ms. Rebecca Ed, of Flagstaff, Arizona, holding a bachelor's degree, listing current occupation as a teacher and environmental researcher, participating in climate equity advisory committee through the Flagstaff Sustainability Office. She lists her hobbies as an avid hiker and explorer of the area. And she listed that her partner is a retired Grand Canyon River guide who has spent hours exploring the canyon. When at home, she loves exploring Pump House Wash with her mother, who resides in Kachina Village, as well as her dog, and she also meets the minimum qualifications. So those are the six candidates that have submitted their applications and have been verified as meeting the minimum qualifications. At this time, if I may, any questions?
Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the input and what have some questions for legal on this. And we understand the parameters in which you indicated that you were looking at the written documentation, but I do have a question with regards to Eric Eichenberry. I note he is already an elected member of the Coconino Community College Governing Board and was recently reelected in twenty twenty two. So I have two questions for legal. Number one is, is he, since he's already holds an elected position, in fact, elected position with Coconino County, is he entitled to apply? And then number two is, if he is entitled to apply, is he entitled to serve on the Board of Supervisors when he already holds a position and governing board member of C C C?
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. I did some research into this yesterday. There is actually a statute that's directly on point regard. It's actually under the Coconino, the Community College Board of Directors statutes. It's fifteen fourteen forty one subsection G that says that a county officer, as provided in the statute, which includes a supervisor, is not eligible to serve as a member of a community college district governing board during his term of office. I did not find anything that would prevent Mr. Eichenberry from applying and or that would prevent this board from considering his application. However, he could not serve in both positions. So if he were offered the position by this board, he would need to resign from his community college board of directors position.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman.
So just for clarification, then, if, if in fact, this board chose to appoint him to the vacancy, then he would have to resign as C C C and there'd be a vacancy on the C C C board?
Correct, and if my memory serves, I think that would be filled by the superintendent of schools possibly if that vacancy came open.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Okay, please continue.
Thank you. So we have provided some of the previous information utilized during the two thousand twenty one vacancy process. This may be familiar to some of you, and it may be a remembrance of your first stages as a board member. So we've.
One moment, please.
Yeah.
Before you continue, Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and, and actually, I was talking with county manager on this as well, but members of the board, given the fact that this is a public meeting and public has obviously input and part of our, our discussion here in an open public meeting, and given the fact that we're talking about potential interview questions, I really don't think that's appropriate for us to discuss in open public meeting. I think the intent and purpose would be to maintain a certain level of confidentiality. And so I believe the county manager has a plan in terms of going forward on how we can get our input on interview questions and yet preserve the confidentiality of the questions.
County manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Yes, the questions in your packet are those that were used prior to, of course, in the previous recruitment. So going forward though, with board members, if you have individual suggestions or ideas for questions, if you can submit those directly to me, staff will compile all the information and the edits or the suggestions from board members and compile those into a set of the questions for consideration for the interview itself. So again, any suggestions for questions, please send them directly to me and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue now.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The last item I wanted to highlight about the interview process is staff is prepared to help moderate the interviews. So by asking those questions on November twenty ninth, to allow the board to be more attentive to the responses of the candidates. So if there's any other housekeeping items that you would like us to include in that November twenty nine interview process, we would be happy to include those.
Thank you. I, I think the one, one area that I would add to it that we discussed earlier possibly was the fact that this is open public meeting, the interviews are open and to the public. We ask that the other candidates do not listen in or participate in the interviews of the other candidates and that they respect their privacy during that process. Supervisor Horstman?
And that's what we did before. And, you know, to a certain degree, it was on, of course, when we did it before, it was all via Zoom. This is going to be in person. I guess we could sequester them back into a room during the time period, but it could be a fairly long time period if, if in fact, the board chooses to do all six candidates. So in the, short of that, I think that is one possibility, quite frankly. Short of that, however, would be to get affirmation from all of them, much like we did with you, Chair, that they will not take part, they will not listen in, they will not ask somebody else or hear from somebody else who has listened in and is, is privy to the questions and the answers. We're really trying to preserve each, the integrity of each individual application and each individual's answers.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. Are there any other comments or questions at this time from the board? I don't know, you tell me, is that the question?
Are we?
At that point, or do we, we need to move forward?
So at any time during this meeting, if you would like to enter into executive session, the county attorney can advise on what we can discuss in, in executive session as far as process, as you all discussed about keeping things confidential versus what the public is apprised of.
Supervisor Horstman?
And, and what I'm talking about is not necessarily needing legal advice or even executive session. You know, I just think, and I'd love to hear from my colleagues on this, you know, obviously, we now have the candidates, we have the paper information. I think we, the board, need to decide, do we want to do a deeper dive now and then, and then weed out a couple candidates? Or are we going to just say no, let's go forward and interview them all? I think that'd be an important question to ask and see how we feel about that. And then just, it'd be good to get input from everybody on how they want to handle, how we want to handle those questions, the questioning process. You know, I know that in the past, you know, there would be great if the chair would have a script about, hey, we've got, you know, these eight questions or seven questions or whatever many questions we end up with. You've got a, I think we decided before, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chair, we wanted to keep each one to an hour or under. And so to let them know, look, you've got six questions, seven questions, eight questions, that means you need to make sure your time is allocated equally among those or proportionately among those. And, and then probably have each of the board members take turns on asking the questions of the candidate, making sure we leave adequate time at the end in case there's some follow up questions we'd like and/or if the candidate had questions of us. So that's what I was meaning about just, should we talk a little bit more specifically in how we, the board, want to handle the process?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sue Reds, Horstman. Supervisor Fowler?
I move that we go into executive session.
Do we have a second?
For advice from legal counsel?
That's why we go into.
Legal counsel? I am, I'll second that if you want to go in for advice from legal counsel.
That we go into executive session.
Okay, all those in favor going into executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We're now going executive session. We will return upon petition of executive session. Thank you. We're now going into executive session. We will return upon completion of executive session. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. We are, we have adjourned executive session and we're returning to our normal public session. With that said, I will hand it over to Mr. Corey.
Thank you Chair, members of the board. So where we left off is November 29th, the scheduled interview date. We had determined based off of your recommendation and information from our previous meeting, that the interviews would be conducted in public forum. Comments from the online portal as well as any other written correspondence for those candidates would be provided to you preceding the meeting. Based off of the last discussion, it was mentioned that no public comment may be taken or members may not be able to speak on the candidate's behalf during the interview process. So one of the questions and directions that we may ask the board is for process, would you like it to be interview only and no public comment accepted in the interviews? Supervisor Horseman.
You know, as I, I mean, my two cents worth is yes, I don't think we should be doing public comments during interviews. I think we did, as I recall, earlier, we kept a public comment portal open. So we actually were receiving written, if you will, public comments, but rather than this turning into, I mean, I think this is a time for us, the board, to get to know the candidates and to be making decisions as board members.
I would agree. The one thing I would add to it is I would like to know if we want to leave that public portal open until interviews or have it open even after interviews so that we can get feedback from the public. And that's a question I'm posing for the board. I'm open either way.
I'd like it, I'd like it open throughout the interviews because they're, we're doing it in public. So people can listen in and so it would be interesting to get comments based on the interview questions and the interviews themselves, but closed after the last interview is finished.
Okay, thank you. Other board members. Vice Chair Bagay.
Yes, thank you Chair. I would just say probably just during the interviews to have the portal open for comments to be made. We put, do it afterwards then, you know, some might still be trickling in while we're trying to make some kind of the, with the process, continuing with the process.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler? As well? Okay, so in that case, please plan on leaving the portal open until the last interview or 30 minutes after the last interview. I don't know what that timeframe would be or 15 minutes after the last interview. Just to give that opportunity to the last candidate to also get feedback from public forum. County Manager Prue.
And to follow up on that conversation too, during the interviews, as we get public comments on those interviews, we'll need to get, compile those and get them to you. So that you can see, because again, you won't have access to the public portal. The staff does and so this is part of our, our responsibility. We'll make sure as we get any comments during the interview that you're getting that information as well.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I would ask to have that information as we're doing our deliberations, not during the actual interviews. So that way we're not getting distracted from one candidate to another. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you Chair, thank you Board. The next item is that in previous interview practices, the board has gone into executive session for final interviews. Is this something that you would also like included in this process?
Supervisor Fowler?
Once we conduct the interviews, we can go into executive session for further discussion.
Excellent.
Supervisor Horseman. Yeah, so in that time, we'll, we'll make that decision if we're ready to make a decision or if we need to have a second round with some finalists candidates.
Thank you. And Clerk Daly has mentioned she is prepared to provide all candidates with the information related to exec session. So based off the information received today, we have six candidates for consideration and the board may select to interview some or all. That was one of the decisions made at the previous board meeting as far as process. So is there any direction from the board and the desire to interview some or all of the candidates?
Vice Chair Bagay.
Thank you Chair. Probably all six will have to be interviewed.
Supervisor Horseman.
I agree.
Supervisor Fowler? I would agree as well. I think that in order to maintain transparency and give the public the opportunity here, all the candidates, I think it's important that we give that opportunity.
Thank you. Based off the scheduling, our intention is to invite all six candidates to interview on November 29th. Is there any duration or time limit you'd like to place on each candidate's interview?
I know that when I was interviewed, it was only 30 minutes, but we, I would like to see a little bit more time to give our candidates the opportunity to share who they are and let us as the board understand who they are a little better, a little deeper. So I would suggest 45 minutes. Do my colleagues have any other suggestions? Vice Chair Bagay.
Thank you Chair. I agree with the 45 minutes.
Agreed.
Agreed. Supervisor Fowler? Okay, so please have the interviews at 45 minutes.
Excellent. The last question I would have for direction to staff is in previous interview fashions, staff have assisted in the moderating or asking of questions. Is there any interest from the board to have staff or board members present the questions?
So again, I'll make the comment when I was appointed, it was pure virtual, but that was during a COVID period, so it had to be virtual. Now we're in person, so is there the desire from the board to ask the questions or to have the staff ask the question?
We will. At that time, we were, because we were still a meeting by Zoom, that was the reason we, we had our staff do the interviews because we didn't want to create any kind of confusion if there be any. But today, we are all in, in person, so we'll do, the board members will each take a question.
Do we have any other comments from board members about doing questions or doing staff questions?
Sounds like a good idea. Agree with Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you Supervisor Horseman. Vice Chair Bagay.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. In that case, as we're preparing the questions, we will look to have each supervisor ask a question during the interview process.
We are prepared to schedule the interviews during the date of the 29th. And on that agenda, it'll specify that the board may select their top candidate at that time. However, any appointment would not take place until January during a regular scheduled meeting. However, we have also reserved some time on the December 5th Board of Supervisors agenda in case that time is needed and further discussion is needed. Would you like us to keep that time slot on the December 5th meeting?
Supervisor Horseman.
You know, I'm hopeful that after the interviews, we can as a board deliberate while it's so fresh in our mind and I think it'd be great to have it on there as a potential action item on the 29th, but I also don't think it's a bad idea just in case to also include it on the 5th as well.
Any other comments? Vice Chair Bagay.
Fairly agree.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler? I also agree. I think we should keep December 5th on the agenda just in case. Give us that breathing room, but with the hope that we're able to make a decision on the 29th. Oh, and I just want, I want to add, I know that part of my schedule is part of the reason why we need a longer break. If, I'm gonna see if I can reschedule things to make sure that we can get through the interviews, so. I'll get back to you as soon as I find out.
Excellent. At this time, I would ask of the board if there's any information or other considerations that you would have of staff as we prepare an outlined agenda for the 29th as well as inviting these candidates to interview with you on that date.
If I could ask, as Chair, as we're first opening up, if I could get a script of what we want to say to the candidates, I would like to make sure that I'm saying the exact same opening and not changing it around with different candidates. So just to be fair, so I'd appreciate it if you could just prepare that for us. Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns or comments from the board? Okay, it's County Manager.
Just to, just to, as a next step though, we will be working with communications to put together a press release that captures the direction of the board from today's work session. So we will capture that and and work in a press release and send it out accordingly.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board or staff? All right, well, thank you. Do you have anything else or is this the last piece of the item?
This is all we have for you today. We look forward to getting all of this information prepared, disseminated, and interviews to be completed on the 29th.
Okay, and so we will get the, with the interview questions, we as the board will be getting you our feedback with the comments that are the old questions that were given. Is there a timeline that you need that feedback by before the 20, obviously before the 29th, but by when for the 29th?
If we could have it no later than the Friday preceding, I believe we would have enough time to prepare all final documents.
You realize that's Black Friday, right? It's the Friday right after Thanksgiving.
So questions are not the only thing on sale here.
All right, now I just want to make sure that's clear and that we know when you need it, so that way we have time to integrate it. Yes Supervisor Horseman.
And we talked about this. Are we going to sequester all of our candidates? Are we just going to ask them to affirm that they will not be involved or listen in or get any information about other questions?
Colleagues, what would you prefer?
In the past, we have, in the past, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. In the past, we have just asked them to respect the process and and just not listen in on the conversation. So I guess we, there's a certain amount of trust that has to be within yourself as a candidate and also, you know, your, your responsibility to the public as well. So I think it's really important that they, each of them, they're going to be taking an oath also, so just, we have to trust that they're honest and good people that have applied and they're going to be respecting themselves, the board's process, as well as the public.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Any other comments or response? It did occur to me, one question that I have is the order of the interviews, will we be doing them in the order of the packets or will they be randomized? How will that work?
We will do our best to follow a standard list and make sure that that list is given to you. Of course, if there is any conflict in the candidate's schedules, we'll do our best to make sure that they both fit. I do have one follow-up question based off of the idea or the question of asking these candidates to respect the process and allowing each candidate to interview without knowing the questions in advance and being present during others' interviews. Would you like them to remain on campus or on call following their interview in case you do ask them to return for a follow-up in executive session?
It's, if I may, Chair.
Supervisor Horseman.
Yeah, I just, they need to be ready on call for probably the same reason as Supervisor Fowler's already indicated. We'll, we'll, we will treat them with the respect of colleagues and, but they should be available on call.
All right, are there any other comments from supervisors? Okay, I think, I think you have your answer there. Thank you. All right, in that case, if we have nothing else to discuss today, meeting adjourned. Thank you everyone. Good job.